The City of Valley Center Council Meeting for June 1st, 2021 is now in session and we're missing our city clerk. Who wants to step? Okay. Let's try this.
Good evening, it's the roll call.
Roll call.
Here, Councillor Stan.
Here.
Councillor Evans.
Here.
Councillor Davis.
Here.
Councillor Anderson.
Here.
Councillor, or Councillor Woman Gregory, sorry.
Here.
Councillor Kersetter.
Here.
Councillor Wilson.
Here.
Councillor Colbert.
Here.
Alrighty, is there a pastor from our ministerial, I cannot say that, ministerial alliance? I do not see one, so please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, item five, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion in a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, thank you. Item six, the.
Approve the minutes of the May 18th, 2021 regular council meeting as presented and amended.
Second.
A motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Alright. Let me get caught over here, alright. Item seven, presentations and proclamations, we have item A, Senate Bill 13, House Bill 2104 presentation, I'm assuming Mr. Smith is going to do it along, oh, we're getting them both? Wow.
So you'll, good to have us both for the presentation this evening. And so tonight, we're gonna go over Senate Bill 13, this is our new budgeting laws that took effect this year, Matt's gonna kinda lead the discussion, and then we'll just answer questions as we go, feel free to ask at any point in time, and we'll kinda explain how this new process is gonna work. Good evening all, so Senate Bill 13, what does it mean? Basically, it's new legislation brought out by the Kansas Legislature, that's me. It's, you'll hear it called the Truth in Taxation Bill. Click on that top. Thank you. A couple of the major things, it repeals the tax lid that we currently have, which caps how much revenue we're allowed to collect in dollars, and it gives us some new notice and public hearing requirements if we choose to exceed our revenue neutral rate. Oh, what's that? What's the revenue neutral rate?
That's, yes, I was hoping somebody would ask that, but.
The revenue neutral rate is the rate in mils that will produce the same amount of revenue in dollars as we have the prior year. So you calculate that, as you can see on the screen, by taking last year's property tax dollars divided by next year, this year's assessed valuation estimate that we received from the county, and you multiply that by a thousand, that gives you the rate in mils. Kind of an example for you, the, if the city levied, these are hypothetical numbers, these are, this is just an example from the League of Kansas Municipalities, this is not actuals for the City of Valley Center. But if the city levied $900,000 on a valuation of 29 million, that would give you your mil rate of 31.034. So then the following year comes around, that would be for 2021, or the current year, and then if we're budgeting for 2022, place we have to start is the amount of revenue in dollars that we received in 2021, which, if your valuation increases, that means your mil rate, or your revenue neutral rate, will be lower than your current mil rate. So can we exceed the revenue neutral rate? The short answer is yes, we can, but there are no built-in revenue increases, so new development property increases in values, things like that, none of them, none of them automatically produce any more revenue for the city, in the way they've kind of been calculated in the past. So at this point, the, just, it's all based on the mil rate in how much we're allowed to collect. If additional is needed to fund the budget, then you have to follow the procedure to exceed your revenue neutral rate, and there's a little, we have to, we'll go over the timeline a little bit more later, but the deadline to notify the county that we'll be exceeding that rate is July 15th.
Actually, the, the date we need to notify such a county would be July 20th, the, after we approved our budget calendar last time, that's when that supplemental house bill came into effect and got signed, so I actually bumped that to July 20th.
The 20th. And if we choose to exceed the revenue neutral rate, then a tax rate hearing will have to be held, so that, just like we have budget hearings, people can come and voice their opinions. And the, also, the, this council will have to approve a resolution with a two-thirds vote passing. The tax rate hearing, kind of the same, like I said, as a budget hearing, gives the public their chance to come out and speak about it if they're interested, it is in addition to the budget hearing, it can be on the same, during the same meeting, but it has to be a separate hearing, open and shut. So the steps, steps to, to adhere to the Senate Bill 13 requirements are, so on June 15th, we will receive our revenue neutral rate from the county clerk, and that will contain our estimate for next year's city assessed valuation. Then we figure out our budget, determine the city's funding needs, calculate our levy, what it needs to be in order to meet that budget, which determines whether or not we are needing to exceed the revenue neutral rate. If we do intend to do that, we have to notify the clerk by July 20th. And we, they will send out, or we will publish our hearings in the, in the paper, just like we do for the budget, we'll have to hold our tax rate and our budget hearings, adopt that resolution that we talked about, and then certify our budget between September 20th and October 1st.
So this year, how the dates work out for us, kind of puts us in a little bit of a crunch, because between June 15th is our, when we do our budget draft presentation, and July 20th, when our, that notice is due to Sagitt County, we have one meeting on July 6th. So that's why, on that initial budget calendar, put in there, we may have to schedule a special meeting in between there, and to make sure we kinda cover everything, but our second meeting in July is actually on the 20th, but Sagitt County is, they're gonna close 5:00 PM, so we'll have to let them know by then, so next meeting, June 15th, we're gonna go all the way through every fund, everything, just throw it all out there, get your initial feedback, if we need to set another meeting, we can sure do that.
Let's take a break, that was a lot. Any questions? Alright, we'll move on. This is a slide taken from our, the budget workshop that we had with the Department of Administration with State. The first part, we talked about already, the county clerk's gonna tell us how much our, what our revenue neutral rate is, and what our assessed valuation is. The second part is an important sentence, which says, "The taxing subdivision cannot levy in excess of the revenue neutral rate unless the procedure for Senate Bill 13 is followed." If we do, we will have to refund it to the people who paid it, so they really mean that, that's an important sentence, and you'll see why in a second. So then, the other part of it is that the, after, if we choose that we are going to go ahead and have that hearing, and follow the procedure to, to exceed the revenue neutral rate, then the governing body cannot adopt a budget with a rate in excess of the proposed rate. That's similar to what we have now, we have to publish what we're gonna do, and then we have to stick to that. It's the two side by side, with one important difference, which is levy versus adopt a budget. In the first part, just saying what you can do, if you can't, if you don't have that hearing, you cannot levy in excess of the mil rate that, that is your revenue neutral rate, even if it's due to a change in property value that happens during the year, so.
Keep in mind, this is all based off estimates, and they're not finalized out till November, so after our budget process is done, that's when we know our final mil rates, our final valuations.
Here's a bit of an example of why that could, could present a problem, is, and this is again, not City Valley Center's numbers, this is a, you know, just an example created by, this was actually from the Department of Administration with the State, this is straight from their presentation, just that if the City of Ike needs $500,000, and that's what they plan to levy, and they receive their estimated valuation of 14 and a half million dollars, so there, that estimates their mil rate at 34.483, one of two things can happen, if, if their estimation is, is too low, and it actually, in the end, ends up coming in higher, well, then they end up levying a lower mil rate, which, no problem there, but if something happens during the time that that estimate is given, to the time that it's final, like, there is a property value dispute, and someone's property value gets lowered, so now your assessed valuation comes in a couple hundred thousand, in this case, $300,000 less, you'll see that that causes the mil rate that you're levying to go up to 35.211, but you're not allowed, if you didn't hold the hearing, you're not allowed to levy that full amount, you would have to refund the difference in that, and I calculated it was, based on that second one, the maximum they'd be able to levy was like 489,000, instead of the 500,000 they would need for their budget. So our takeaways, kind of recommendations, is that we'll probably have a tax hearing every year, even if we don't intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate, it'll be in our best interest to do that, just in case the property assessed valuation for the city goes down for some reason, we don't wanna end up getting stuck having to issue refunds, or make up a deficit in our budget. The budget calendar will, will look a little bit different, it's got a few extra dates in it, but it'll be consistent with what we've been doing, and sort of, I guess, the way I like to think of this, is it kinda changes our perspective on how we're looking at the revenue for the city, whereas, we used to look at it kind of from next year, trying, from the future, and now we were looking at it more from the perspective of last year, so what, what did we have, and moving forward from there.
Questions?
Councillor Member Gregory.
So has the state changed the date that you need to turn in the budget information?
Yes, if you, if you don't have the hearing, it's still August 25th, same schedule is normal, if you do have the hearing, you have until October 1st, so they give you extra time at the end there.
Okay.
Kind of almost flipped how we did it in the past, normally, we'd get our valuations, insert our budget, and then set our maximum ad valorem levy, and then have our hearing, well, with the new revenue neutral rate, that hearing process, we'll basically set that maximum up front, and then we'll just go down from there, as the budget timeline finishes out through the end of the cycle. Flipped it a little bit.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen, I guess, there is none.
Thank you.
Alright, we're at the time of the meeting for the public forum, this time, we allow anybody here in the audience that would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda. Alright, seeing none, we will move on. We have no appointments, still committee's commissions the whole business, so we're gonna move right along to new business. Get through this. Alright, item A, Lions Park usage request.
Mayor and Council, this evening, we have two of our young citizens here in Valley Center with us, as well as Eric Scriven from the Chamber to present this request, so I'll turn over to Eric.
Counsel, these two young ladies approached me a couple of months ago, to request their DECA, Mr. Mosley, about doing a children's carnival for the Wichita Children's Home this summer, basically just wanted some advice, how to put things together, so we met a couple of times, and they have done an amazing job scheduling events, lining up some food trucks, things like that, they're just requesting that we use Lions Park on that particular day, July 10th, from 1:30 to 9:45, of course, they have an outline on cleanup, we'll have plenty of help there, I'll be there all day long myself, I guess that they just, they've done an extraordinary job for a couple of high school students, setting all of this up, and a, and a really awesome thing to do, to raise money for a very, a very good charity, so.
Do they wanna speak?
They didn't, that's they, they, they asked me to.
That's, 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 that's not too unusual, that's alright.
Yeah, they said, you can, you can talk, I was like, alright, so, yeah, if you guys have anything to say, please jump in, they've done, they've done all the legwork, they just came to me a couple of times for advice on things, we pass some things along to them, and the things they needed to get done, and, and, you guys have anything at all? Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, great, that's, first of all, the, what?
Oh, one question I've had is the exact time, so we've had a few different discussions over the course of the event planning, so we wanna clarify on time.
We wanna use the park. We don't really wanna start the event until 5:00, to be exact.
Excuse me, could you step over in front of the microphone, please?
My bad, my bad. No, we wanna use the park, like I said, 1:30 to 9:45 on July 10th, we don't wanna start the event until 5:00, and we wanna hold carnival games, food trucks from 5:00 to 7:00, so that period of time from 1:30 to 5:00 will be to set these things up, to get people there to explain their roles, get everything in order, we're hoping to host a movie from 7:30 to 9:00, 9:30, with a 15-minute cleanup procedure, so hopefully that clarifies that. Thank you.
Can I, can I continue now? Thank you. First of all, it's a great thing you're doing, I appreciate that, the one thing I don't see in here, which we usually request, is a, insurance?
My letter says that that would be covered under the Chamber Commerce's official calendar.
Then I must have missed it.
Yeah, it was on the back there.
I saw it.
And O'Neill and Christie both have copies of it.
Perfect.
It was included, yep, absolutely.
Perfect, you know, that's always a concern, I knew you had it covered, I just couldn't see where I didn't see it.
We talked about what we were gonna have, make sure nobody drives their trucks through, any of the irrigation, anything like that, so we'll make sure that we're not set up anywhere we shouldn't be.
Right. Alright, is there a motion, Council?
Motion to approve request of use of Lions Park for fundraiser on July 10th to benefit the Wichita Children's Home.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries, thank you. Item B, water tower design, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, happy Tuesday, did want to, I did pass out to you all, and I think Mr. Smith will be putting them up here on the screen as well, and wanted to go over some exciting times here in Valley Center when it comes to upcoming project this fall, and that's the Water Tower Rehab. Part of, of course, the Water Tower Rehab process is not only cleaning and rehabbing the inside of the water tower, but also coming up with a new logo, and some new graphics on the outside, and it's time for a fresh coat of paint on top of the water tower as well. I know that this process was kinda started back in 2017, and so we kinda picked it up from, from beginning, and kinda restarted the process of the designs. Before you, it will be three different designs, one of the artists that did present a rendering per our request from the city is with us this evening, and I'm sure that he'd like to present, and that's Mr. Chris Coats from the Valley Offset here in town. The second one that will be on the screen will be from our high school students, and so we did ask our high school students to present an image as well, and then the third one is from the Wichita Brick Mob, the Brick Mob is a group of artists in the Wichita area that does a lot of the graffiti and the murals that you see downtown and around the Wichita region, the most recent one kind of is the Wind Surge, so the big Wichita that's painted on there is actually from Brick Mob, they've also done a lot of the Chicken and Pickles around the Wichita area, and also down in San Antonio, and kind of those types of murals, and then they're also designing one for the Valley Center Rec Commission, that will be on the garage doors of that as well, and so I'll show that to you here in a minute, but I'll turn over, Chris, did you wanna come up and chit chat a little bit about your design, and how you came up with it?
Hello. As we have up here on this, on the display, is the design I came up with for the water tower, I just wanted to take a moment to explain the design elements, and what we've got here, basically, we've got, for Valley Center, being in the middle of, being in the Little Arkansas River Valley, we've got valley imagery, it being Kansas, we've also got a fair amount of wind, so that's incorporated as well. Dover, from Valley Center logo, also incorporated in the lower portion, and again, back to the Little Arkansas River, the wavy lines, all incorporated into one concise design to represent Valley Center, and of course, to top it off, the hornets.
Very nice. I kinda looked at that, and I thought, waves, hey, it's the water tower, waves, that's a, that kinda goes with that too, so. Great, you don't, okay, nevermind, nope, I'm done. Counsel doesn't.
Thank you.
So we'll scroll to the next one, this one was from, submitted from the high school, I'm not sure, no one was able to join us this evening, of course, with the first kind of official summer vacation, I didn't expect any of the high school kids, or our department to come in, but what they have here is front and back, each student designed a different hornet, that's on there as well, so kind of a little bit uniqueness to it, but thought it was a great design, as one of our three, and then we'll go to the next one, and this is the one from the Brick Mob, a little bit more, you know, in your face, kinda showing Valley Center incorporating, of course, the, the hornets, and the purple and gold that we've all embraced, with, of course, our school and USD 262. What the plans are, is to take these three designs, and of course, open it up to the public, and have the public entirely vote based upon these three designs, and the majority will win and be presented to Council, and then it'll be up to, of course, this governing body of which one that you wanna go with, with, of course, the community input on their survey of, of who gets the most votes. Any questions?
Counsel, anybody? Councillor Member Kersetter.
Still wanted to thank all the artists for their designs, I personally like one and three, but that's just me.
Anybody else? Councillor Member Evans.
How are they gonna be able to vote?
We'll be putting things out on social media, also on our amazing new app, thank you, Mr. Kane, push notifications, and try and, a lot of different platforms, if they're not on social media, then they'll be able to come into City Hall and cast their votes, and maybe we'll even put little flyers or something in some of the convenience stores, and seeing if people wanna send, submit their ballots or something, you know, we haven't got all the details, but we'll make sure we, we cast a wide net, just like we did with our past community engagement tools, and we've had amazing response throughout COVID, of course, electronically, and we'll try to get paper ballots as well, leave it open for a while. And this is something that will actually happen this fall, and so once, you know, this gets done, you know, there's not a huge time crunch, and then we'll put this out for bid, and then there'll be, of course, the work completed during the slower times of usage this fall.
I have a question that you probably don't have an answer for.
Probably not.
But I'm really surprised Councillor Member Kersetter isn't asking this. Is the cost to paint this tower going to change based on the designs we use?
Oh, that's a great question. Excellent question, so there's no significant cost impacts, it's, you know, we'll basically get a digital graphic file that we then provide to the tower maintenance companies that will edit out, you know, you're talking maybe $2,000 to $3,000 swing on a $500,000 effort, so it's, that's still real money, but not enough, in my opinion, to sway influence, you're gonna be staring at it every day, don't make a decision off of that small amount of money.
Yeah, well, I just, the reason I question it is because some of these look much more detailed than the others, in how, you know, so I know that would be, require more work, so to speak, so it's not like you can just go to like, you know, and put it.
It's, it's.
A wrap on it.
Yeah, you know, 20 years ago, that, that definitely would have been the case, but it's all digital now, they prefabricate their stencils, they'll put the wrapper on the tower, and then just blow and go, it's, it's a pretty slick operation.
Alright, well, cool, thank you, you did have an answer. Any other questions? Seeing none? Alright, thank you. And we're going to move on to the lagoon variants, item C.
Good evening, everyone, we have received a letter, which was attached to the council agenda this evening, from Mr. Larry Hall, who lives at 1310 South Meridian Avenue, Mr. Hall is in the process of potentially doing a lot split, but in order, before he does the lot split, there is an issue with the city zoning code, this property is currently zoned RR1, which is our suburban designation for suburban residential district, Mr. Hall does have a lagoon on this property, and per the city zoning code, you are required to have at least five acres in order to have a lagoon as your system, he is here this evening to request a variance, that that be waived for this particular case in conjunction with the lot, the proposed lot split, to reduce that from five acres down to two acres, and then through conducting a lot split through the city's planning and zoning board, create a two-acre lot for himself, and then to the east, create this lot, this is just a rendering, it isn't scientific by any stretch of the imagination, or done by a surveyor, but it's just showing a rendering of what potentially could be there with that three-acre lot, should someone buy that property, which he does have potential buyer in mind, that would come in, build a single-family home, on that lot, construct a septic system, so they would not be requesting a separate variance to do a lagoon, as stated in Mr. Hall's letter, he does understand that it is the intent that with the Meridian Street upgrades, that there will potentially be a sewer line at that, at that time, or when his septic, or when his lagoon would fail, that he would connect into the city sewer service and negate the need for that variance in the future, but again, city staff does recommend approval at this time of this variance request, and should you recommend approval and vote to approve the variance, then Mr. Hall will work with my office and the city's planning and zoning board on doing an actual lot split where that would be done by a Kansas licensed surveyor. I'll stand for any questions, as well as. Yeah.
Alright, Councillor Member Anderson?
So there is an existing lagoon, we're just, we're looking to get approval for a variance.
Correct.
It would allow them to do a lot split, we're not.
You're not approving the lot split. You're not approving the lot split.
I think, I think the huge difference here is that we're not allowing them to put up the lagoon in. It's an existing one, and I think that's a huge difference in what the variance.
Yes.
I would be in favor of this over someone looking to put, put in a lagoon on a smaller portion versus one that's already existing and an existing home.
Okay. Exactly. Yeah. So the existing lagoon would stay with the two acres. The new three acre lot, if approved through the planning and zoning board with the creation of a lot split, they would be putting in a septic tank. So we're not, that new property owner would not be coming to you again for another variance at a future time.
Thank you.
Counsel member Kerstetter.
Which house is it? I swear, I want me to start.
It is, yeah, there you go.
Is it the brown roof one?
Keep going. Keep going.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, zoom in.
Yeah, right there. Yes, yes, that, so that's 310, and then the lagoon is that, yes, is that right there?
Where's this, I'm just curious. Where's this proposed?
So the lot would run, or the line would run north and south, somewhere east of the lagoon, somewhere in, somewhere in that area. Again.
So they'd share a driveway?
No, so you'll see where it says North Clarence to the south. That is city dedicated right of way.
Oh, I didn't know that road existed. Okay.
So, yeah, so Clarence is a dedicated right of way street for Valley Center, and the new three acre lot, when the house would be built, they would, the driveway would connect to that street.
Oh, I'm with Counsel member Anderson. It's already there, so I don't see why not.
Like, and that's, and this is just a very, it's a hand drawn rendering. Again, that shows, so that right there, that is the street right of way of Clarence.
Trying to figure out where Meridian was on that map, and it's.
And Meridian is not on this one. It would be to the west.
Needed a reference point. That's all I needed.
There we go.
I have a question. One of those streets along there is not a city street. It's not Clarence that is.
Correct. To the, yeah, farther to the east.
Farther to the east is the one. Okay. I knew one of those there is not a city.
Yeah, that's, that's private. That is not publicly.
We've had issues in the past with that being a private road, so.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I didn't think so because you brought it up, but I just wanted to make sure, so. All righty. Counsel.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for variance for a lagoon located at 1310 South Meridian.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, guys. You're not going to sit down and wait till I come back. All right, fine. I knew you were going to stay up here. I just thought, you know. Item B, final plat approval for Leakers Valley Center second replat.
All right. So as you've probably seen when you drive on Meridian, we've got an exciting project coming up with Builders First Source. They have acquired the former Leakers Grocery Store and are preparing to make a significant multimillion dollar investment in upgrading not only that facility, but constructing some additional commercial buildings. And so that project has necessitated a replat of this area. So as it exists, there are three lots. If you think about the grocery store, that is one lot. There is a lot to the south on which the unrebuilding sits, and then farther to the west, there is a separate lot right now. So now Builders First Source owns the grocery store lot, the lot behind it. This replat is a joint effort between Builders First Source as well as the Unruh family to generate a new, again, it's a replat because this area has already been platted. It's a second, so it's a second replat. This will create a single lot in which all of Builders First Source, all of their facilities and as well as their new facilities will be located all on one parcel of ground, and then the unrebuilding will be on a separate parcel, and then there will be one to the north. Excuse me. And so with this, this has been approved by the city's planning and zoning board and been reviewed by city staff. The final step is for you as councils to look at this. Once you grant approval, we'll get the necessary signatures, and then this can be filed with the Register of Deeds Office once the other private signatures are acquired as well. With us this evening, we do have Sean Bryan with Cow Valley Engineering, who has helped to create this plat map, and he, along with myself, will answer any questions you may have tonight.
Counsel member Evans.
I got a question.
Yes.
What does it mean by replat?
Okay, so a replat means that you're taking a plat that already exists and changing the property boundaries, changing the legal description. That's what a replat is. So it's just taking up an area that's been platted and doing and changing those boundaries, changing the configuration.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, counsel? Before I ask, I have one. Counsel member Wilson.
I, I had some concerns about the, and I'm not sure if this is going to be Mr. Golka that's going to look at this or not, but they were talking about matching up Ford Street with the entrance to that new area. Is there, is there truly enough room there that's not going to encroach on the banks property to make that work?
And I, well, I'll definitely defer to the city engineer. I can tell you, so even once the plat is approved tonight, before any construction, before any changes can take place to the, to the new lot that's being created, that'll be owned by, that is owned by Builders First Source, they will need to go through the site plan review process with the planning and zoning board. We will definitely include any kind of traffic studies that are, that are needed at that time. Those will be reviewed and approved by city staff, the city staff review team, including the city engineer, as well as the planning and zoning board. So again, tonight is just approval of the configuration of land ownership and those property boundaries. Actual, the, the future, the proposed commercial development, including in alignment with Ford Street, that will be reviewed by the city's planning and zoning board at their meeting in later this month, actually.
Any other questions? And that the, the extra lot is part of that land swap deal, or the, that's the Unruh.
That will be owned by the Unruh family, and they have shared with us that they are looking at potentially building another commercial, building like the one on the south side. So again, the, some great growth as well.
All right.
A motion to approve the Leakers Valley Center second replat.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I know you're not done. That thank you wasn't to you, that was to them. All right.
Fair enough.
Item E, final plat approval for Dill Hill, Dill Hill Estates.
All right. So you have seen a rendering of this before and approved a number of variances as well. Dill Hill Estates has been approved by, again, by the city's planning and zoning board, and the final approval is before you tonight, before city council. With us this evening, we do have Will Clevinger with Garver that helped create this new plat. Again, city staff has approved it, as well as the city's planning and zoning board. Mr. Clevinger and my staff, myself, stand for any questions you may have. Again, this is creating, this is residential. This is creating 27 residential lots off of Seneca and Ford.
Counsel questions? We know we've all seen it, and we've had the presentation. So this is the official plat, so.
Motion to approve the Dill Hill Estates final plat. Second.
Got a motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Great. Thank you. Now I can say thank you to you.
Welcome back.
Yes. Item F, sidewalk discussion. Counsel member Kerstetter will be leading this, and he's actually got a really good idea, so.
Well, so my second official meeting was with you with the golf street, golf sidewalk street chaos. So I know how sensitive this issue is, but so the, if you read my letter, should probably get Mr. Strunk this, but I was just trying to come up an idea of what the best way to address deteriorating sidewalks without making the homeowner come up with the 100% of the cost. So it's a cost sharing program. The city wouldn't cover more than 50%, and then it's more of like in the infancy stage, say, next year, we allot the $5,000, like I said in the, in the letter, to just see if anybody takes it. If nobody takes it in the first year or two, then say, okay, well, nobody wanted to do it, then we don't have to do it. But we can, we could target areas of, like the high traffic areas. I know Fifth Street is one of them. Near the schools is another one. My kids walk on one that I almost tripped over, but that's another story. What else am I missing? So, yeah, what am I missing, Brent?
Um, Counselman Kerstetter, I think you come up with a great suggestion to have city staff look into kind of formulating and preparing a document and a resolution or ordinance to help the council if they so choose to pass a program like this. Now there are some in other communities, so it'd be kind of a first come, first serve, I think is what you're looking for.
Right, yeah, it was just you, so they have to get two to three bids of city approved contractors to, then we'd have to, they'd work with the city. I don't know if it'd be Mr. Shrack or whose department, probably, probably Mr. Shrack's department. Oh, Mr. Eggleston.
They're both pointing, so, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that.
Okay, so you'd work with one of the departments to just get the appropriate sidewalk put in so it would last, and then it would not be a tripping hazard, and we could just help the image of the city. And then our, it's also a part of our sidewalk and bike path plan.
Yep, our pet plan and.
Yep, yeah, and maybe having a different, you know, scoring criteria if they live up with on, you know, within one of those districts or, you know, kind of similar, you know, we currently do with infrastructure. So if a sub, you know, contractor or developers put in new water mains and those things, they're only going to put in six inch, and we would want an eight inch, you know, then sometimes the city covers that difference. So depending upon, you know, not every sidewalk is only four foot, not everyone is five foot. You know, there's some that are going to be 10, 12, depending upon locations. And so I think you, we draft this to kind of fit, you know, whatever the applicant area. Initially, I was mainly thinking fixing sections. That way it's flat, and if it's to whatever's current, like if it's currently a four foot wide, then we replace that four foot wide two sections. But then if it's like a whole section, then we have to, it'd be a lot more expensive, but have to get it up to, up to code, basically.
And I know, you know, there's been a lot of, you know, every city, I mean, there's a ton of sidewalks everywhere that, you know, usually on the list somewhere, and our street department has done a fantastic job with, you know, identifying some of those, like you said, high traffic areas, and, you know, that's all information that if the council wants to move towards a direction such as this, is that we can draft policies and start putting that in the budget for 2022. Already talked with Mr. Smith, and, you know, that's something that we'd be able to, you know, do, you know, throughout the budget conversations for fiscal year 2022.
Yep. So now that you guys are all surprised that I want to spend money, it was just an idea of to just make the city look better and let everybody, I've heard complaints about different sidewalks around the city too. So I'm like, okay, what's a benefit to the land, the homeowner and the city to get that sidewalk replaced? Because I don't want to have somebody's, tell somebody to replace a $5,000 sidewalk when they may not have the money. Granted, they may not have the money for the half that, but we can help out a little bit, then that'd be nice.
Counsel member Anderson has a question.
I can't pass up the opportunity to ask Counsel member Kerstetter where the money's going to come from.
You know, you know, we do have a budget, you know, within the street department.
I didn't figure it was a issue, but I couldn't be the only one thinking that.
No, you weren't. I was hoping I didn't have to say it, so thank you.
I appreciate your thoughtfulness and the, and this idea, I think, is, is great, and whether it can live in the exact way it's, it's drafted or if, or something else comes out of it, I think it's great to at least try.
Try a pilot program and then go from there and leave the water sprinkler systems alone.
You know, I think this also, you know, this really helps with the quality of life, you know, we've been talking about in, in Valley Center and throughout all the strategic plans, and it really fits our, our mission statement.
Counsel member Colbert.
Yeah. It's a good idea, but how does this, you know, affect the planning that's scheduled for Main Street and Meridian by placing sidewalks, gutters and that? Would just have a bearing on that? The reason I'm asking is, what I'm worried about is, you know, homeowners on Main Street or on Meridian, if I understand correctly, under the WAMPO program, they would not pay their share for the sidewalks, correct?
Correct. Very similar to Fifth, Fifth Street or 85th, you know, whichever one you want to call it. You know, that sidewalk wasn't assessed, as well as Ford Street as well. And so when we have a lot of funds when it comes to, in the forms of grants, WAMPO funding, if it's KDOT funding, you know, a lot of those sections that are new or replacing, such as the Meridian section, you know, all the way from the south side of the tracks to city limits, as well as from the north side between Main and Fifth, yeah, those property owners aren't going to be assessed that. So, you know, this is a good kind of, you know, reaching the handout of, of saying, yeah, unfortunately, you know, you're not on one of our areas that we have a lot of grant funding for yet, but maybe the city does have an opportunity to cost share 50/50 with you to help you replace that sidewalk. That is the property owner's responsibility to maintain and replace per our ordinance. So, yeah, it's, it's not going to be fair across the board, Counselman Colbert, but, you know, that's what the great thing with applying for grants and getting some of those WAMPO funding, like you said, on that board to, to get those projects done in some of our other areas of the community.
Yeah, I just don't want anything to mess up with what we're going with WAMPO on it.
Yep, absolutely.
I guess member Kerstetter.
On that, Mr. Colbert, that's why I'm like, I was having a hard time telling homeowners that you have to fix a sidewalk and, but the ordinances say that's their responsibility. So what's the best alternative to that if they're not in the, in the area that's going to get fixed anyway with one of these big projects?
I'm well aware of that because of.
Yeah.
South wind.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? Great. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel member. It still took me three days to get off the floor after I read your initial email, by the way.
Take your medication?
I did, yeah. That's why you didn't get a response. I just couldn't even phantom that that came from you, but. All right, we're going to move on to item G, approval of agreement for supplemental mowing. And counsel, you have been, should all have.
Right.
A nice, big, readable.
At the last council meeting, we requested, then got permission to put an RFP out for bidding some mowing services for parks and public buildings, as well as some of those services to benefit Public Works as well. We quickly got that out, and that's why you have that in your, at your bench this evening, because the turnaround time was very quick, and we wanted to get this to you guys as opposed to wait till the next meeting, just to get into meet, into the agenda packet. But with that said, we received three quotes from different lawn companies. Tonight, we are recommending that you consider Cut Rates Lawn Service. They are the second lowest bidder on the list, and the reason for that is that they are a city of Valley Center business, and obviously, we try to do what we can to support hometown businesses. The others do live within the proximity, but they're not necessarily in the city themselves. We really appreciate them taking the time to bid on this in such a quick turnaround time and stuff. What we're, what we're looking at here, again, just to kind of refresh your memory, is about 12 and a half acres of mowing. It's a portion of what we mow. It's not by any means all. It will just help supplement the problem we're having with getting additional seasonals out there to, you know, part timers to help us mow the grass and keep up with our properties, as well as, and then Mr. Eggleston, he normally hires a seasonal as well. So about eight acres of that at the top of the bid sheet there is parks and public buildings, properties, and then about another four and a half acres of that is how the breakout works with Public Works. Other than that, I would stand for any questions you might have.
Counsel member Kerstetter.
Two questions. Well, why is there such a big discrepancy between the 18, 3, and then the 13s? Any ideas?
I, I just think that.
I just, it's just a big difference. It's like my HVAC I was talking about. It's just ridiculous. Okay, and then I was kind of disappointed Dragonfly didn't, wasn't Dragonfly who were using for the tree services?
We, we are, yes. And I, I reached, the bidders that are on this list specifically responded, saying, yes, they would really try to bid on this. They really wanted to. There were more than that that we didn't include on the list that said, no, we can't take anymore, you know, can't take any more mowing this year, but thank you, maybe next time and stuff. So we, we didn't even bother including them. These were the ones that we specifically either phone called or emailed out to. It, it was posted on our city's website as well, just for transparency and for anybody. In fact, the, the Cut Rates Lawn Service folks found it out, found out through our city website, so.
Oh, nice. Oh, nice.
Or through the grapevine somehow, in that regard, so. But they were, they are a local company, and I, I did not realize that.
Councilmember Evans.
Is there any disadvantages or advantages between the Cut Rates and the Metal Arc Lawn Care? Separate them besides that small gap of, of money?
Not, not that I recognize.
Okay. Well, I think, I think supporting the hometown service is definitely a good idea in this aspect.
Councilmember Wilson.
Neil, exactly what are we getting here? Are we, are we getting cut once a week? What's, what's, what's making up this, this 13.5 number?
So there was a variety, I don't remember exactly how many properties offhand, but in the bid proposal that was in the council packet last time, there was probably, oh, close to a dozen or so properties.
Correct, yeah. Is this once-a-week service? What is this, is this getting us?
Some of them are, it varies. Some of them are once a week, some of them are bi-weekly. So, a lot of the Public Works and a majority of ours are bi-weekly. There's a select few that we've requested to have done weekly. And that would be, it would basically carry it through the ends of the warm season and cool season timeframes, which warm season generally is end of September, early October, and then cool season is generally end of October, early November.
So this roughly is about a one-third of what you currently mow today, correct? Acreage-wise?
Well, if you, I mean.
You had 35 acres on your presentation earlier.
Right.
This is 12 and a half.
Right, not all of that's mine, only eight acres of its parks.
Okay.
It's a, it's a significant portion, yes.
Okay. Are you down on staff as much as 1/30 of your staff for your summer help that you're looking for, normally have?
So, yeah, we're, we are trying to get another seasonal hired at this point. We're, we're almost there with that person. The other, the other gentleman that we have hired is, he's there right now, and then we have our full-timer, so. We are operating basically with one full-time and two, two seasonals. The, the key with the seasonals are, you never know how long they're going to stay. The one gentleman is a college student, and we expect or, and hope to get him into the fall. We don't know what his, he plays football, so we know his schedule is going to be a little, you know, jumbled when it comes time to, you know, for practices and classes and stuff like that. He's indicated he kind of knows, you know, some of the, some of his schedule, but, you know, there's still a lot of question marks with, you know, regard to his practices and when he would be available to us. So that's why we're looking at putting on this second seasonal right now to help us out. And that'll give us some flexibility in that regard, as far as helping out and filling in the gaps. We've also got some potential medical conditions that may limit our availability with other staff members that, you know, without getting into specifics and details, that we're anticipating and watching out for, just in that regard, so. That's, that's part of the other reason we're, we're staffing up a little bit in that regard and looking at this as another option and an alternative, because it's hard to, hard to get these, bring these folks in. Just to kind of put it in perspective, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I don't remember for sure. We interviewed roughly, I mean, reviewed probably close to 30, 35 applicants this year. Had one hired, you know, that didn't, that didn't work out, that person moved on. So, I mean, it was just a very short window, and then there's been countless ones that where we start that process and we deal with this on a regular routine basis, find those folks, you get to the background or you get to the fitness test, drug screenings, and they don't make the cut.
One last question. So, I don't know if you run the numbers, but budget-wise, what do you think this is costing the city versus having our own staff doing this? How much more are we paying to have this done? Because I'm thinking that if you're going to continue to possibly have seasonal help issues, this may be coming back up next year for budgetary costs. And I'm just thinking of the head as to how this is going to impact budget.
It, it most certainly would. I mean, it's, it's something that we are definitely considering, like I kind of alluded to in our presentation earlier this evening.
Sorry, I'm trying to take Kerstetter's fire here of, of where's the money coming from?
So on an annual basis, we budget roughly $30,000 for three seasonals throughout the year. This year, this year, we've averaged one full-time so far throughout the season. So this is roughly one-third of our seasonal salary, so it fits right in perfectly to cover that extra third of the mowing.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Councilmember Colbert.
Yeah, I got a procedural question to ask. Since it, one of these companies cut my grass, did I stand myself from this?
No.
Okay.
You, you are not benefiting from this decision, so it's not a problem.
I just want to make sure.
Nope, very good question, I'm glad you asked. And Councilmember Kerstetter.
I only have one question now, since Mr. Wilson took it, the other one. You mentioned, alluded that it's partially Public Works and partially Parks as far as acreage. What's the breakdown?
Again, that breakdown is, the total combined is 12 and a half acres. About four and a half of it is Public Works, and then the other eight is ours, Parks and Public Buildings.
Thank you.
Hold on. We haven't gotten through your motion yet, so you can't leave until you get it approved or denied. See, that's how that works, so stand there.
I'm here for the long haul.
All right, I'm going to assume, and this could be wrong, that the work that these guys are going to do are the stuff around the buildings, like the stuff they're normally used to, what they would normally do. I mean, you're not going to have them mow ditches or the parks or anything like that. You're having them do what they normally would do as far as building type things and that.
Pretty much flat ground, basic mowing, and I'll let Rodney talk as far as regarding the ditches.
As you recall, we recently, a year or two ago, bought a specialized piece of equipment for our steep slopes, because when we looked into that, we reached out to several companies and they were like, we're going to take care of that. There are several areas that we mow with a special back to John Deere tractor. So basically, we got with Neil, and most of the areas that we picked out were around the wells, flat areas that we normally, where we came up with our Florida.
Perfect.
I make a motion to approve mowing services by Cut Rates Lawn Service for the amount of $13,420.
Second.
The motion in a second. Any further discussion? Who's second? Who's second? Yes, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item H, Resolution 701-21 Sunflower Gardens Phase II Lease Termination.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, once again. But we're going to have to go, Byron Adrian with Midnight Housing reached out to me. He notified me they were refinancing their mortgage on Sunflower Gardens Phase II. And during that process, they just overturned the title work that we actually owned that property and have been leasing it to them since 2004. So after doing a little bit of research, that was actually one of the city's first industrial revenue bonds that we issued to help out one of our local partners. And within that issuance, at the first 15-year interval, which happened to be June 1st of 2021, which happened to be perfect, because of our meeting, obviously. They did have the option to purchase that property back from us for a sum of $100. So that's what this resolution is here for tonight, is just to convey that property back to Midnight Housing for that $100 sum. We'll set up the closing, leave this week or next week, and then they'll cover all the closing costs, offset our costs and the legal preparation for the resolution. Any questions?
Questions, Council? Is there a motion?
I make a motion of approval of Resolution 701-21 authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain property to Sunflower Gardens Senior Residences LP.
Second. Your motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item I, Approval of Standard Construction Details.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. As with any great presentation, I'd like to start out by publicly shaming myself. There are a few typos that at the last minute I caught in the construction details, one of which is an omitted E in the word of concrete in one of the details, as well as a certain council member's last name, I believe it was Councilmember Kurt Setter. So we had a transposed letter there that will get corrected. So with the exception of those two typos, I am pleased to present an update to the standard construction details for the city. So the last update that we officially went through was approximately 2002. Those details were used for a number of years, but largely started to get swapped out with newer details through the mid-2010s, just as new construction means and methods came along and, and updates to graphics and some of the drafting programs that we used. So there's a memo included in your packet, it outlines all of the sheets that are up for consideration this evening. I'll admit that I'm not an expert, subject matter expert, in all of these details. We have a team of experts at PEC. My background is more on the paving, grading side of things, but certainly if you have any questions regarding the specifics of those sheets, I will do my best to answer those. We did present this to the Planning and Zoning Board last week. They were all in favor of this, and really, it's an exciting time with approval of two replats this evening, or one replat and one new plat. There's a lot of new development coming up that we want to make sure meets city standards for what we expect for all of the infrastructure that's going to be turned over for public maintenance. In addition to having that benefit, knowing exactly what we're going to get for streets and utilities, it will save the developers time and money in utilizing their consultants by being able to rely upon these details rather than generating themselves and going back and forth with staff, trying to get what we want. So a lot of benefits to having this, not a lot of downsides. We work with local contractors to make sure that we're not putting anything in here that's going to drive up costs or anything that they haven't seen. They are in large part very similar to the standard details that the City of Wichita and the City of Derby have on their shelves, so. Nothing too surprising, just a few specific twists that we put on it to make it Valley Center Zone standard construction details. So with that being said, we would be seeking approval from Council this evening, or I will do my best to answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve the update to standard construction details for the City of Valley Center.
Second. The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item J, Approve Contract for Mill and Overlay Repairs by Pearson Construction.
First of all, thank you, Josh. So you make my mistake a lot less glaring for the wrong date on my letter here. So as you see in my letter here, Pearson Construction, one, is working in town on the First Builder Source project, as well as they were contracted to do several road repair projects for Cedric County, just outside of town. And then, staff, and I'm going to call them out, Mr. Clark, noticed this and saw the opportunity and a possible opportunity to gain some savings, and him and Mr. Golka went and spoke with Cedric County. And they were willing to take a look at some of our streets, so I contacted Pearson. We went and looked at several sections of road here in town that I've listed. And they weren't able to do the exact same work as they were outside of town, but we, we were able to contract a very, very good price. And we can end up with about one and a half miles of street, which would consist of West Main, stretching all the way from your West Street intersection all the way to Birch, right in front of that railroad tracks. And this would be a two-inch mill, and they would come back over with a one and a half inch asphalt overlay on all these sections of streets. And then we would get West Fifth Street going from Meridian West to Redbud. So that would encompass that whole section of road that's very, very rough, across those railroad tracks. Of course, we have to maintain our railroad right-of-way, they can't work within the railroad right-of-way and get on up to Redbud. And then, last but not least, North Meridian, from the north city limits to just by the middle school, and it's hard to explain, there's a, there's a section there where the asphalt changes, where it was the new to the old, and we're going to bring it all the way up to there. So this would give us a, one, this encompasses a great deal of our patching list that we had already identified. And two, it gives us a much more aesthetic and longer-lasting repair to these roads. And in keeping with our strategy that we're trying to put forth with updating our roads and getting more to a maintenance schedule into a repair schedule. And this would give us a good mill and overlay to approximately 9,061 feet of street at a cost not to exceed $199,523. The reason we went with this is they're already in town. We were able to take advantage of economies of scale, as mobilization costs are very, very large. If, if you, if you approve this tonight, we'll, we will go ahead and use them as well to finish up what patching we have left. We have some curb and gutter and valley gutter on our list, and of course, we'll work through that as budgets allow.
So would you like to answer Councilmember Kerstetter's question before or after I ask him to ask it?
Bring it on.
Councilmember Kerstetter.
Actually, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
First one, where's the money coming from?
Right here.
Our system improvement line in the streets.
Streets, oh, I missed, I'm sorry. All right, next one, I, I was driving on, from Fifth Street to First Street on Birch. That's a wide section, it's a, that section could probably use the same mill and overlay. No, it's not Birch, it's Ash, I'm sorry.
Ash.
Yeah, Ash. Whatever, what's interest bank on? Ash, okay.
Would be Ash.
Okay. Is that on your radar, is my question?
Yes.
Okay.
It is on the radar.
I just.
We, we're, we put together what started out to be a five-year rehabilitation plan. This is a living, breathing document, as any are, you have to be able to, these have to be able to morph and change with budgets and with priorities as well. The thing with Ash is it's an extremely wide street, that street is over 50 feet wide.
No, I know.
So when you go to do anything on there, the cost is going to be considerable.
I, I just wanted to make sure it's on the radar.
Yes, sir, it is on our radar, it is a truck route.
Yeah, right.
And two, if I could add to that real quick. So, you know, as the, you know, hopefully the infrastructure bills coming out from the feds, you know, these are things that we're going to be looking at when hopefully we're applying for downtown revitalization, and that's usually one block off of your main drag. Before you do that and you look at that, you want to make sure you have your main stormwater trunk line on Meridian done. Right now, we have nowhere for that stormwater to go. I know everybody, you know, cleans the bottom of their car out on that section of street on Birch and Ash, you know, on the nice dip, at least I know I do. And so if it hits the bottom of the expedition, a lot of people get there under a carriage clean. But so you kind of wait, and you don't want to do a mill and overlay on that full stretch because of the cost. And because if we're going to maybe look at that in any near future, why waste the money? So, so that's kind of why, you know, these, the current roads that we discussed are on the list. And also too, with doing Sheridan, we've had a lot of great response from doing Sheridan from, from Main to Fifth. So kind of, you know, looking at the major corridor streets right now, and then hopefully, once that's done, we can branch out and get some of these residential done as well.
Makes sense, thanks.
Councilmember Anderson.
How much do you budget every year for mill and overlay or, and/or street repairs in general?
Well, so Barry may want to jump in, help me. When I first started here, our system improvement line was at $480,000. It's gone down to $300,000 now, as we reallocate $180,000 to, I can't remember exactly.
The, the first initial cut was in 2019 or 2020, budgeting for '21 after COVID hit and all that. Wanted to be real conservative by setting that down to just a cash carryover line item. So I mean, it's still able to be used as a reserve, so to speak. So, I mean, right now, we have $300,000 ready to go to cover all of this and any additional patching we need. And if something else comes up, economies of scale, we can jump in, we still have those reserves to do that.
So, and the follow-up to that, so we budget a certain distance that you try to mill and overlay or repair every year? Or is it strictly a budgeted, I mean, get as much as you can out of it, depending on the price of?
Get as much done as you can and, and get as much bang for your buck out of that $300,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Stan.
Actually, Barry just answered one of my questions, because I know when you mill and overlay, sometimes you get down and the alligator tracking is still in the base of it, where it needs dug up and patched and fixed, where you put the overlay over it. So that, answer that question. But also on their bid, they have traffic control, one lump sum. So that answered that question, but also on their bid, they have traffic control, one lump sum for each of the streets. But then in their notes, they have barricades and traffic control excluded. I do this every day.
We're going to hold on to traffic.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Council, motion?
I make a motion to approve contract with Pearson Construction for mill and overlay repairs in an amount not to exceed 199,253 dollars and authorized mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, yeah? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council.
Moving on to item 13, consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
But motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And I missed a section. Here it is. Staff reports. Mr. Shrek, anything else? Mr. Owens? Captain? Mr. Eggleston? Where is he? Mr. Golka, where'd he go?
A very brief foreshadowing of council meetings to come. Today we did, that's two like zingers starting off. It's like I rehearsed this. I don't know. So at our subsequent council meeting, we will have two items for your consideration. One is the waterline relocation south of Leakers Building to support Builders' Force Source. So those plans and that proposal form got sent out to contractors today, as well as some drainage improvements on the south side of Ness. So we've got storm sewer outfall to the river that has degraded through some erosion down there. Relatively small project, but we put together some plan sheets and sent that out to prospective bidders as well. So those would be two items for council's consideration in our upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Arbuckle. Mr. Smith. Mr. Clark.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Just a heads up, PBS, our telethon debut will be again on June 9th. And so if you got my email, June 9th is our next date for the PBS now, PBS Kansas Telethon. We had a little shorter time and also too, wanted to thank Big Larry's for always sponsoring our meals. And then this coming month will be tequilas. And so we, we gave Big Larry's the season off for the summer telethon. We hit them up every single telethon, as well as Meridian Street Art Glass for always having contributions and donations to the telethons as well. So we thank our local businesses for their support. And also too, want to wish councilmember Colbert a happy birthday. Today is his birthday. It's not even, it's today, June 4th. So.
We rarely have birthdays actually on a council meeting. So yes, but no, we will spare you, councilmember.
And he was just exhilarated to be here tonight. He was like, this is how I want to spend my birthday. I knew it.
And just so you know, guys, he didn't just give you thanks because you were here. He does do that regularly. So anytime businesses get joining, he helps us out. We always let him, he always acknowledges him. So I just didn't want you to think he just mentioned that because you guys were here tonight. So. All right. We'll move on to governing body reports. Just a reminder to get back, get me back your opinion on our city administrator for his yearly review. Give me a couple of days before the next council meeting to put everything together. That would be great. So other than that, I have nothing. Councilmember Stan?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Evans?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Davis?
This is Jackelson. I just want to make sure Elm and Hickory, is that on your radar as far as repairing the potholes? Okay. There's, there's at least one that's developing pretty well, pretty good. What's that? Yeah.
Councilmember Anderson?
I had a follow-up from Mr. Eggleston. Forgive me if I missed it. Timeline for the mill and overlay that we just approved tonight, I assume was going to be in the short term, near future. Is there any? Okay. I, the only thing I wanted to bring up was I know we had some issue with, and it was all a timing thing with waterline replacement with, but with the school, when we did Sheridan's mill and overlay with the schools and with this north, with the North Meridian mill and overlay, you've got the main connection between high school and middle school with buses. So just wanted to make sure we're aware of that and work with schools. And if we can get that done in the summer, it would be fantastic for that stretch at least.
And that's part of, you know, working with Central County and their plan. So actually, it'll be a brand new overlaying road from, from middle school now, thanks to your approval, all the way to 125th and then 125th to the interstate. I mean, so they're doing a massive project.
Okay.
We're jumping on board with Central County is they'll allow us the days for Pearson to break off and work on ours. Those kind of depend upon their schedule and rain days.
Okay. I didn't realize that they were doing all of that. So I assume they will coordinate as well. So thank you. That was all.
Councilmember Gregory?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Kerstetter?
I do. I have a question for Mr. Arbuckle and Mr. Clark. I read in the paper, I think it was last week or two weeks ago, that we are no longer, which I'm glad to hear, that we're no longer forcing or mandating masks for city staff, but you're requiring a proof of vaccination. Is that a this invasion of privacy or discrimination?
No.
Are you sure?
Currently, there's not legislation that has been passed.
Because to me, to me, that's a medical discrimination. That's just my opinion. I'm not a lawyer, obviously, but that's why I was asking Mr. Arbuckle. So that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you.
There was actually an article just yesterday or the day before in the Eagle stating that, yes, you can, you can be, you can be let go for not getting a vaccine.
Well, that, okay. So the court system hasn't gotten a hold of it yet because it will happen, I bet.
Yeah. So what we go by is currently what's happening in current law.
Which is?
Which is we can ask for that until they tell us we cannot.
Well, who's they?
Uh, either the state of Kansas or the federal government.
Okay.
Councilmember Wilson?
I got a couple of questions real quick. Brent, real quick, just a follow-up. Since the past rains kind of brought it back to the forefront. Are we making a headway on the north end of town with our resident on the west side of the street?
Uh, yes. There, there's, you know, the lovely Valley Center ponds that, you know, form from, from a lovely rain. You know, I call those mosquito holes, of course, meaning from Minnesota and that's a state bird. And so we are working with Central County. They're identifying exactly the right of way and, and working with the property owner. Just had a meeting with Central County last week or a week or two ago. They're giving me that information. Evergy is also going to be doing a project on 93rd Street. So we're working on obtaining more right of way up there as well. And so we're working with trying to, now that we've kind of crossed off another box, which is regrading the field to the north. That's not going to work and it just not cost, you know, benefit analysis to not pan out to, to really be worth the bang for your buck. And so we have to, you know, go across to the east, you know, something that we'll have to work with that property owner. We really need the county since that is entirely in the county. That is not inside Valley Center city limits. But we do get the water that passes through and unfortunately ponds at, at one of our residents' house. And we're trying the best we can. We've regraded the west side of Meridian in the past. And we're trying to, as much as we can do, of course, you know, we're like a pool table. So we're extremely flat, especially in that location. So trying to get the water through to the ditch has been a struggle, but we're working with the county and hopefully we have some actions coming up here in the near future.
I just know you were spearheading that. I just wanted to see if we had any follow-up on that. I know it takes a little bit of time.
Absolutely. In coordination with, you know, whenever you're looking at, you know, cutting a ditch across properties or those things, you know, try and work with that property owner, if not having to take other actions. And you always try to, try to work with them and very similar to, you know, kind of the Tiff project. You know, they took, you know, that section when they, when they cut in that West Chisholm Creek Trail years and years ago. And so kind of a real similar situation.
Excellent. Thank you. Just a couple of other quick questions or quick things real quick. I, I heard County Commissioner Metzger this morning. I think I probably just butchered his name, but he was mentioning our Tiff project this morning on radio, very, very much pushing the growth that's being seen in the Valley Center area. And, and just, I thought that was a great piece that he kind of put out there this morning for everyone. And then my last little piece, our blue lights. There was news article last night. I think that we should be first on the list to get ours replaced because we noticed them early, early on, long before the city of Wichita did. So see if we can get ourselves to the top of the list.
And, and not to mention the one in our cul-de-sac has now changed color. Thank you very much.
Because you guys are on the council, so you know it's. But, you know, to answer your first one, so, so we are on the commissioners meeting, their agenda for tomorrow for the Tiff hearing. So Mr. Smith and myself, along with Mr. Timason will be in attendance to answer any questions for the commissioners. And also your second one, actually met with Jack, our local rep today for Evergy. And there is a long, long list across the entire state of Kansas, unfortunately. I did really give him a lot of pressure saying, you know, if, if not all of them in residential sections, we need our, our, our really the safety intersections are our biggest concern at 77th, at 69th, and some of those that really need to be looked at and addressed first. Even if, if Jack can go do it himself, he said that he will as long as he doesn't get fired.
Yeah, that one at 5th and Meridian's really bad now too. So.
Yeah. He said he's going to compile a list of the main intersections and then we'll, we'll coordinate. So he's trying for us, you know, our local representatives are phenomenal. Of course, they all have bosses and then there's a chain, of course, in Evergy that we all enjoy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Birthday Boy. Hey, we wouldn't sing. I got to throw something at you. So.
Well, I'm going to give you a gift back. No further business before the council makes a motion and the meeting be adjourned.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay. Motion still carries. I don't care. I did do that once.
I'm thinking of my meetings I've.
I, I did nay. I did say no one time. It didn't matter.